Good morning, everyone. This is the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees Regular Meeting 2021-2. It's January 26, 2021. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Village Boardroom. Jane, please take the roll. President Berry, here. Trustee Phelan?
Here.
Trustee Voider?
Here.
Trustee Mallow?
Here.
Trustee Stalker?
Here.
Trustee Olenichik?
Here.
Trustee Desmond? We have a quorum. Would everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Under public comments, we do have public comments. Mr. Joe Matisse, our School District 122 Superintendent, if you could come to the microphone, make sure it's on, please.
It's on.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're on, yeah.
We typically ask if you live in Oaklawn, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I do not live in Oaklawn, but I do work in Oaklawn here.
You do.
District 122 Superintendent. Good morning, Mayor and Village Board. Thank you for allowing me some time to speak this morning. As many of you know, there was a tragic car accident last week that claimed the life of Simmons 6th Grader Siri Robinson. Siri was an energetic, positive student whose presence in our hallway will be greatly missed. The district staff is greatly saddened, as well as outraged, by such a senseless loss. There is now a void in our school district family that cannot be filled. I've been receiving many emails about ways that we can help to support Siri's family. At this time, we are respecting their privacy and giving them time to mourn, but as I learn of things that they may need, I will share that with the village and the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matisse, for being here. Superintendent Matisse, we have received many reach-outs as well. Our hearts go out to this family in this horrible time, and, you know, it's such a tragedy. I'm very sad to say, you know, these things are not uncommon these days. It's terrible. I feel, I really feel the pendulum has swung way too far. Our legal system has somehow shifted to being more concerned about criminals than victims, innocent victims. This is wrong. This is immoral. I'm gonna say it, there is no sane or caring person who could look the other way and say this is okay and let this stand. Kim Fox has to go. It's, it's time. You should resign immediately for your betrayal of this public trust. This beautiful and innocent young girl was riding in a car with her daddy, doing nothing. She was slaughtered by a man who should not be out on the street. There's multiple felony pending, pending felony charges. Looking at what I was able to see, attempted murder, domestic abuse, drug sales, pages and pages and pages of problems. Multiple felony pending felony charges. He is walking out on the street. By turning our legal system into a sham, serious crimes have absolutely no consequences, and criminals know it. Innocent people like this beautiful girl are lambs to the slaughter. Kim Fox has created a downward spiral of crime which is destroying our cities. She has dropped charges in tens of thousands of felony cases. These are charges that are not trivial. They are charges like murder, shootings, sex crimes, and attacks on our police. Cook County now has flash mobs looting our cities because Ms. Fox has made felony retail convictions, felony retail theft charges virtually impossible. We have surges in murder because violent thugs walk through the revolving doors of our courts. Less than 20% of recent cases sent to the court for carjackings have charges filed. And Chicagoland this year alone saw, in the first 20 days, an astonishing 144 violent carjackings. There are no consequences for criminals, and it must stop. It's time to start caring about the victims like Siri, the innocent men, women, and children who live honest lives, pay taxes, and work hard just to survive. Kim Fox has to go. Thank you.
Well said, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to say a few words.
Steve Phelan?
Like you, I am appalled at this, and more so because it's not a unique situation. It's recurring over and over again. We spoke about it last couple of meetings, the carjackings, the armed robberies, and I understand, you know, from reading the story, that the individual was highly intoxicated. But the face that he was making, the smirk, the smile, to me says it all. He was not fearful. He was not remorseful, likely knew he'd be out again, if not same day shortly thereafter, commit more crimes, victimize more people. That's the problem. Kim Fox entered the political, the state's attorney realm with a scandal, you know, a false charge of racism against, you know, unknown people, was proven to be behind the scenes, allowing that person to go uncharged. There's a time and place for striving for equality, the new Biden administration. It's great to see, you know, the, all the different people that's, that are taking positions of power, females, minorities. But as Martin Luther King said, it would be nice when we get to a point where the lead story isn't what a person's race or sexual orientation or gender is, but just their qualifications. And Kim Fox, to me, is the poster child for someone who got to where she is, doing the wrong things. And it's astounding to me that a majority of the population can vote that in one time. But if we don't start doing something at the local level, people of all races, it's going to get worse. And the fact of the matter is that the victims of these crimes are largely minorities, which is the most maddening thing in the world. So I applaud what you said. Couldn't agree more. She's a disgrace. She's unapologetic, and it's time for her to be called on the carpet.
She needs to resign. This is outrageous. Thank you, Tom. Any other comments?
Mayor, I'd just make a quick one, yes. You know, I think that I was a policeman at times. I, I would just want to reach out to my fellow retired, fellow police officers and say, keep up the good work here in Oaklawn. Don't get demoralized by the state's attorney's office, the fact that you put all that work in and you get no real reward. Just be a good policeman, keep our community safe, and I'm sure you will. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Trustee Voider, you touch on something that I've had now several police chiefs in my eight years as mayor, and each one of them has expressed frustration about building a careful case, having evidence, having witnesses, doing the work, frankly, spending the money to do the work, only to have it thrown out by the state's attorney and, you know, for arbitrary reasons. It's very frustrating. It's a social experiment that has failed. We need to move on.
Right, Mayor. You know, every, every man or woman that puts the badge on is here to serve this community or the communities they work, but it's a job, and they want to go home at the end of the day and kiss their wives and kids goodnight. I think my biggest fear is policemen get demoralized by what happens here, and they lay back on the job, and this is not the time to lay back. This is the time to be more aggressive. So officers, keep your mind on your job. Do a good job. We'll, we'll be behind you.
We'll be aggressive. For example, if the county doesn't prosecute something, our local, our local adjudication often will, so, you know, but to just, what, what Trustee Phelan was saying, you know, that this affects every community and especially, you know, this is a map in the Chicago Tribune of carjackings, okay? It is not a white problem. It is not a black problem. It is a universal problem. This is outrageous. This is unbelievable to me. And I guess I don't want Siri and her family to suffer anymore. It would be great to feel that this, this loss is not in vain, that something positive will come of it. I really think it's time for the pendulum to swing the other way. We need to care for these victims. They're innocent. It's outrageous. It's horrifying that this gentleman, and I use that term out of just respect for this dais, was allowed to be out on the street. Anyway, with that, thank you again, Superintendent Matisse. I appreciate it very much that you took the time. Any other comments? I'm gonna start this regular meeting, and thank you for being here and sharing that very sad, sad information with us. Okay, we have approval of the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes, 2020.
Conflict of interest.
Oh, yes, conflict of interest disclosure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item four, does anyone have a conflict to disclose with any item on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Item five, approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting minutes, 2020, 101, dated January 12, 2021. May I have a motion on five?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Phelan is our second. Thank you. Any discussion? Let's call that vote, please. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Voider?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. New business by village trustees. District 1, Trustee Desmond.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like a great, great question you asked earlier, shocking that this little girl has been taken from family, often like that probably prevented. It does seem that the rule of law is not respected anymore. People don't seem to, I don't wanna say fear of police, but respect for, for police and for law. People do your job. It seems to have diminished. Hopefully, this police reform bill won't be signed, and we can get back to a community of, country of laws and respect for laws. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. District 2, Trustee Olenichik.
Yeah, and tackle what everybody had said. It is more concerning, this lack of respect for authority and for the police, and talking to our police, there's a concern from them of what their future is gonna be and how they're gonna be able to perform their jobs. And I can assure you, from a village board and from the village of Oaklawn, we back the blue. We, we support our police, and they need to understand that we will do everything we can to let the governor know not to sign this new police reform bill. I know that there's been a lot of petitions that have been signed, and we need to continue to send that message. But the other thing is, Paul O'Grady and legal staff has looked at every one of the new parts of this bill, that if it did go into effect, that we feel as a village, being a home rule, there are things that we can do to help protect our police so that they continue, continue doing the job. And it's, Mayor, I think you've said it, I know other trustees have said it, it's about respect, and it's about respecting authority and letting the police do their jobs. And Trustee Voider, being a former police officer, you, you made a great point of, is that police officer gonna get out of the car and continue to do his job, which we have seen overwhelmingly that our police will continue to do that, and they need to have the support. But it's gotta be difficult, knowing that all the work that you have to do to get a case into court and then see the exact opposite of what you would hope would be done, is that the criminal would not be allowed to be back out on the street. So we, as a village, need to continue to fight and stand strong on this police reform bill. It is not good for the police, and it's not good for this village. And I do appreciate the quick legal opinion that our legal team put together on what the current bill says. From a Public Works Committee meeting, I do want to compliment our Public Works team. We did get hit with a big snow today, and things are looking really good, and I know that they've had some water main breaks, and they're out there pushing it really hard. So, you know, those are the guys that, when we're at home sleeping, they're making things happen so that we go to work. On the agenda, we talked about the 2021 street program, and then doing some things differently with taxpayers' money. There was a, a, a pavement study status report that rated all of our streets and started to look at what our fiscal spend for 2021 is, and there's gonna be bids that are be going out. We do have a new process that we're going to be doing. Instead of rebuilding whole streets when we don't need to, there's a process where we can actually remove the street, recycle the street, and replace it all in one process. So that was something that was brought before the board. We talked about beta testing it, but it's been proven. I know our staff went out to various villages that are doing it and have found good results with it. So hopefully, we can get more streets done this year. But I, kudos to our Public Works team. It's, it's January, and we're already talking about our streets. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. District 3, Trustee Mallow.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to mention that what Trustee Voider said was, was spot on. Our police department is doing a fabulous job. It is demoralizing. It's demoralizing to hear from, from officers that, that things just don't finish. Now, they don't, they don't, they do the work, and they don't get finished, and it is demoralizing, and I appreciate them pushing through and still building cases and doing what they can. So that's a, that is a very good mention, Trustee Voider. So, and then in regards to the Public Works meeting, I was at that Public Works meeting. Trustee Olenichik's doing a fabulous job keeping our engineers on their toes and, and coming up with good ideas to try to, to stretch taxpayer dollars. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. District 4, Trustee Voider.
Mayor, I think just about everything that could be said for this period has been said, but it is fair to give a shout out to our street department. What a wonderful job this morning driving in. Streets are in great shape. Good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. District 5, Trustee Stalker.
Yeah, I'll just echo what's been said, previous trustees. I do, I do follow the law crew into the meeting this morning, and they were doing a great job. They pulled over and let us pass, courteous, they're efficient. They're doing a great job and always have. When I look at the police department, the village of Oaklawn, I'm really proud of the hard work they've done in not only pursuing crime, but closing crimes, getting the information they need to convict people, and I think it's done a great job of keeping this village safe, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. District 6, Trustee Phelan.
Thank you, Mayor. One other comment I wanted to add to the discussion about the problem with crime and criminals going largely free, it's been touched on by others, is the concern about police officers taking early leave, retiring, and worse yet, moving from our community and our state. And, you know, largely, you can't blame them between the taxes and the problems here, but, you know, I think we're at a tipping point where, you know, fleeing a problem is not going to help our country. You know, there's only, it's only a matter of time before these destinations, if this problem is not addressed head-on, become problem destinations, the Floridas, the Tennessees, the Texas, the Indiana. And I would, I was talking to a Chicago police officer, and he made a reference, almost like he was in Vietnam. You hear people talk about how many days out they have. I'm 189, I'm 63, you know, he's talking about days until he can retire, and you gotta believe that the closer they get to retirement, no different than in war zones, the less aggressive they will be, at least I would be, and understandably so, which makes all of us less safe. So in addition to everything we say here, I would like to, and not that police officers largely are watching, but any, anybody in law enforcement take an active role, getting involved. And I know largely they, they probably would say, well, we don't want to get involved in politics. I don't consider this politics. This is life and death. But it needs to be addressed at the political slash governmental level, and if you are law enforcement or related to law enforcement, or, you know, and obviously not just law enforcement, if you're concerned about your safety, instead of thinking about when you might be leaving or can't, can't wait to get out of here, you know, band together with others and say, no, let's, let's change trajectory. Let's challenge those who are advancing these insane policies and defending these, as you largely, perfectly stated, Mayor, it's a failed social experiment. Been proven. And how many more deaths do we have to tolerate before someone challenges? So I would just like to, you know, to the extent it's possible, get that word out there to people of all walks of life, that it's time to get involved. It's time to vote. It's time to be active and, and really take back our community. And then one other thing, like others, I, I was really heartened to see the quality of our streets. For those hardworking people out there who sometimes don't care about anything else in government, other than I don't like to pay a lot in taxes and I want my streets to be plowed, you know, I'd say, you know, good, good job, Jeff, Billy, everybody in Public Works. Not an easy task, get up in the, in the dark of night and navigate our streets, but they look great. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Village Managers Report.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. I'd like to piggyback off a few of the things that have been said so far, reference to Kim Fox. Back after the Jesse Smollett case, I don't know if many of you remember, but the chiefs, the South Suburban Chiefs met, and we all voted to go down and represent the Chiefs Association and protest some of the things we had seen happening in Cook County as a result of Kim Fox having won the election. And this was right before the election was coming back for her second term. And so we went down, we, we were on stage, we didn't, I don't think we received a lot of press over it, but I think, as many of you have spoke about, you know, the police officers that are out there, I appreciate them as well. I was one of them before as Trustee Voider. We know what it's like to be out there and do that job, and I want to thank them. I want to thank our street department, too, as everybody else has talked about. And then a few other things I'd like to talk about is the reform bill that has been brought up. As we all talk about budgets and going forward with budgets and how we need budgets meet and those kind of things, with this reform bill, again, the state of Illinois and, and our Attorney General is putting many unfunded mandates on us again as a result of this, in the form of training, in the form of equipment that we'll need to buy, in the form of data storage that we'll need to pay for, in the form of FOIA officers that we'll have to have review, many of the video that will be recorded as a result of, if this, this bill is passed. So I would strongly recommend our legislature to look at what this is causing, again, in the middle of a pandemic, bringing more unfunded mandates on our, on our town, and many towns that can't take that hit. So with that, I'd like to segue to some positive news. We have begun negotiations again with the owner of Dunkin' Donuts, and we have decided to move in a direction on the goose abatement for Oaklawn Lake. I don't know if Trustee Olenichik wants to speak to that, but we are gonna try to do something where we can try to abate the goose problem that's over there. I know many residents have been dealing with that for many years, and we've tried to tackle it in a couple of different directions unsuccessfully, but we're told that it has to be a process that is continuous, because every season, those geese will come back. So we're going to employ a company to come out and try to abate. So we hope this is gonna work, and hopefully, I can report some good news at the end of the season. So thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. Our consent agenda, item eight. All items on the consent agenda are routine and have been brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. 8A is a request to extend the date of three times previously approved by the Board of Trustees for two temporary reserve trailers until April 11, 2021, for Amazon at 4031 West 95th Street. B is an ordinance granting that request. C is ordinance 210216, and ordinance amending Section 3-2-1 Home Rule Municipal Realtors, excuse me, Retailers Occupation Tax, and Section 3-2-2 Home Rule Municipal Service Occupation Tax of the Village Code. D, like David, ordinance 210217, and ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter 4, D, like David, Section 11 of the Oaklawn Municipal Code pertaining to the fee schedule for inflow and infiltration compliance inspections. 8E, Resolution 21-2-5, a resolution authorizing the execution of a capital loan agreement, Water Sewer, for $200,000 with First Midwest Bank. F, Resolution 21-02-06, resolution authorizing the execution of a capital loan agreement, General Fund, for $630,250 with First Midwest Bank. G, Resolution 210207, resolution adopting the Village of Oaklawn purchasing policy. H, request the Board of Trustees approval and direction to the Board of Fire and Police Commission to hire two firefighter paramedics from the current eligibility list to replace vacant positions due to two retirements. I is a request to approve the Board of Trustees approval and direction to the Board of the Fire and Police Commission to hire one patrol officer from the current eligibility list due to retirement. May I have a motion on item eight, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Trustee Mallow made that motion. Do we have a second? Trustee Voider is our second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, can I have items A, B, and D removed?
A, B, like boy, and D, like David, removed. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I, I'd like to have A and B removed, too.
Okay.
I'm sorry to ask for it.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. We're gonna vote on item eight with the exception of A, B, like boy, and D, like David. Let's call that vote, please. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Voider?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
And passes. Okay. 8A is a request to extend the date of three times previously approved by the Board of Trustees for two temporary reserve trailers until April 11, 2021, for Amazon at 4031 West 95th Street. And B is an ordinance granting that request. May I have a motion, please, on 8A?
A motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Voider made that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Desmond, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. The reason I've asked for these two items to be removed is just yesterday or the day before, there was another story in the paper of an Amazon Fresh opening in Schaumburg, in addition to one that opened in Naperville. And when this development was first proposed to us as a board almost three years ago, that was going to be the big anchor, the exciting news that we were all, if you recall, told not, never to speak about. And then finally, we were able to speak about it, but all during that time, we were, we were told, not promised, that we would likely be the first in the Chicago area or the second. And I'm just concerned, and I asked the manager to reach out to the developer about why this continues to get delayed, and to remind them that, you know, we provided them a very valuable tax incentive to develop that property, and now, you know, I understand, I think, Terry, you may know this, that they are delivering out of there, which begs the question, you know, are they delivering it from some offsite, some procurement center? And what was the purpose? And what about the jobs? And what about all those things? And I did see the response from the developer, and Randy, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but basically, he had nothing to offer. He has no insights as to the, you know, continued delays. So I don't know, Terry, if you have some insights or if concerns are the same, but at some point, we have to be, you know, we have to be told what the delay is and why, because we have a massive complex there that's 100% vacant. I know we have a doctor's group coming in, and we were able to negotiate a nice deal on behalf of taxpayers for the middle part, but this was supposed to be the anchor of this development. It's now three years in the making, and I think it's not unreasonable for someone from Amazon, who frankly have been, you know, sometimes rude to us, asking for information about this development and, and one of our entryways into Oaklawn. I think it's time that we just get some answers on what, what the problems are. So Terry, I don't know if you have more to say on that.
Well, we didn't have any consultation on this issue, because I would have said this in prior things. This is the third time we've been asked to approve these trailers, and while they're not obstructive, okay, the question is, is what's going on here? Okay, for a couple, three, four weeks, the place was all boarded up. I see the boards are down there. We need some answers, and I'll tell you what, this will be the last time that I will support this trailer storage. I want answers, and I'd like to get an opening date.
Well, so if the Board recalls, we were also asked to issue a liquor license to a business that didn't want to give us their name, so.
Yes. Yeah, we've been more than fair with them, okay? And we're looking forward to it as consumers, and, but we're disappointed that this is dragging as other stores are opening. Why? Why? That's all. That's all, Mayor.
Thanks. And just to jump off a little bit on what Trustee Phelan was talking about, it's, it may appear vacant, but there are signed agreements for all but the west end of that, according to the developer, but, you know, again, it of that, according to the developer. But, you know, again, it, it's a development that, you know, is all on hold because the anchor, the anchor is, is kind of missing in action. So, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, we can use the virus as an excuse and I'm sure it slows everything down, but we're entitled to know what's going on there. It's all we're asking.
Well, right. We were one of the, we were in a contender to be first, now out of the gate with this store in Illinois. And now suddenly we're kind of bumping over to third and maybe even less than that. I don't like it either. I.
And if I might, the trustee of order's point, almost every business except grocery incites COVID as an excuse. Grocery is exploding because of course we're all at home and shopping from home and going to the store. I mean, you look at the average grocer in this country and they're up 25, 30% on revenue. So, well, I agree with trustee of order that, you know, the legitimately, this because construction and delays and all that, but it's been at least a couple, three months that we were told they're ready. They're ready to go live and they're ready to start delivering and hiring. Right. People are, I've received three or four inquiries asking about when, you know, when can I apply for jobs there? And they're being told to apply for something up in Nor, you know, again, in Schaumburg or somewhere else. So, not to beat this to death, but I think we just need some answers and not just, you know, we're working on it.
Thank you. Let's call the vote on eight A and eight B. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Eight D, like David, ordinance 210217 and ordinance amending title nine, chapter four, D, like David, section 11 of the Oklaun Municipal Code pertaining the fee schedule for inflow and infiltration compliance inspections. May I have a motion on eight D, like David?
Moves to approve.
Thank you. Trustee Phelan made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Mallow, thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, the reason I asked to remove this, as the board all knows and hopefully most if not all of the village knows, this is an effort to address the decades-long problem with flooding. And in this particular case, raw sewage backing up into people's homes. We've talked about it at length in board meetings, public works meetings. We featured it in our mailer here that went to almost all the village. And despite that, of course, I don't know if other trustees have heard, I've received one call from somebody who got caught in the switches, for lack of a better term. And the idea in this case is this ordinance requires a sewer inspection prior to selling your home. And the village will render a, an opinion about your system to potential buyer. And that opinion will address the illegal or improper hookups, as we've been talking about them where, and I can botch this, where basically people are diverting their, their sump water, their storm water discharge into the sanitary system, which causes that system be overrun and then backing up into, you know, not hundreds of homes, you know. Last I, I remember looking, it was more than a thousand. And not everybody responds to surveys. Bill Meyer, Jeff probably have good details on this. But this is a problem that if you've ever experienced it, and I have, I don't know there's anything worse. You can't do anything with your basement. You can't invest in it. It largely goes unused. The cost is, is, is in the likely hundreds of millions over the course of decades of people having to address this problem. So there is a cost, a nominal fee to have this inspection, but the real cost will be having to address the problem, to fix it. And the village has committed to a program where we will split 50/50 the cost up to 5,000. And we're strongly encouraging residents to take advantage of that if they're contemplating selling or even if they're, they're not. This is a problem we need to address. It was brought up more than a year ago. We've sort of slow rolled it, give people an effort to get used to it, to understand it. It's not going to go into effect until April 1st. Is that right, Jeff?
That's correct.
April 1st. So there is time. And hopefully it's not time enough to get out of Dodge, sell your home and not have to address it because it's an important fix. And I know of at least a half dozen people in my district, Bud, you might have some in yours, who have taken advantage of the problem or taken advantage of the program, addressed the problem. One of them is a friend of mine who long suffered for this, told me stories upon stories, one that really, you know, tugs at your heart, where his daughter plays in competitive softball and travels in the tri-state area. And if the forecast were an inch of rain or less even, one of the parents would not be able to go. May sound, you know, routine or sort of mundane, but, you know, if you're talking about your children, your livelihoods, your sense of well-being, that's a problem that we need to address. And that's what this ordinance is doing. So again, it doesn't take effect till April 1st. If somebody has questions about it, you can call the village or the public works department and strongly encourage they take advantage of our 50/50 program. That's it.
Thank you very much. Let's call the vote.
Mayor, if I could add a few words to trustee.
Okay. Let trustee Desmond, then Randy.
Piggybacking what Thomas saying, now, if someone wants to do this, they don't have to wait until they're ready to sell their house. They can take advantage of the 50/50 program right away, I believe. Because a lot of these older houses, they may not realize the laundry, the washing machine is dumping into the laundry tub, which is then dumping into the sump pump, which after this ordinance, they cannot do that anymore. The laundry, the washing machine has to go into an ejector pump, an ejector pit, which then goes into the sanitary sewer. So there will have to be a new ejector pit dug and a new ejector pump installed, which can be significant. So people need to be aware of that, you know, and not be cut out at the last minute where their closing is held up. So that can be, that can run into a couple of thousand dollars. So hopefully people realize that and they're not, you know, rushing, get this done before the closing. Now, I spoke to Bill Meyer yesterday and I believe it, it wouldn't, it would not hold up a closing. The buyer would be aware of it and they could, you know, it, it could become the buyer's responsibility to install it with a credit at closing. I'm not exactly sure how the, the funding would work out with that. But just so people aren't cut out, it, it can be significant, significant construction if you have to install an ejector pit and pump. That's all I got.
Thank you. Randy?
Mayor, I'd like to just piggyback off both the trustees. We, we did begin a, a very aggressive education, education program. As trustee Phelan mentioned in the letter that went out, Oklaun Matters, we dedicated a full page to it explaining how the system works and everything else. And as trustee Desmond said, it is correct that that would be a credit at the closing if, if that was required. Again, what, what the, we, we've had a few discussions with some Realtor groups who were a little upset at us and thought that we were doing this as some type of, I, I don't know what terminology they would even want to use, but what we're trying to do here is to avoid somebody getting a, a house that has been flooding in the past. And then they buy this, it could be a, I'll use as an example, a new couple, 23, 24-year-olds, they, they, new couple just got married, they buy a house, and all of a sudden, they're in their house for maybe a month and their, their house is backing up due to water coming in. So we're hoping that this program will alleviate that. And we are trying to do that through education of the Realtor associations to let them know, don't wait till closing. And as everybody on this board has said at one time or another, if you think you have an issue, call the village, let us look at it. Call your personal plumber, let him look at it. Don't wait because it could save you your, your basement flooding. So that's what the whole program is about. This is not a, again, a, a reason that the village wants to try to make money on, on our residents. We're, we're trying to help our residents, educate our residents, what the issue is, and to eradicate the problem as much as we can without waiting until a closing to do that. And as trustee Desmond said, we are not going to cause a holdup at this point. It, it's just, we need to make sure that the buyer knows that, that that situation exists in the home and then so they can take care of it if they choose to. Thank you.
One other thing, Mayor.
Yes, trustee Desmond.
Also, if, if you did have a problem with your basement, if it was flooding and you didn't disclose it on the disclosure sheet of your, when you closed on the house and two months later, the new buyer got, got flooded, they could actually sue you for not disclosing that. So this will also protect you from any incident like that. No different than if you, if your roof was leaking and you didn't disclose it. You have to by law disclose any defects. So this is a good way of making repairs and getting the village to pay for half of it.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more comment.
Trustee Phelan.
We referred, both Randy and I, to the mailer that went out village-wide. And one of the, one of the three main reasons was this, in addition to providing updates to the village, which we haven't done, the COVID was being a, a primary one. But the other reason we wanted to send this out, and again, it went village-wide, every postal patron, including businesses, although we heard from several people and we did a survey that some areas did not receive delivery and that's something we'll address with the post office. But on page eight, you'll see, as Randy referred, this is flooding remediation, explains the problem, nice graphic, and what to do and who to contact. And, and again, not to beat it to death, the idea is not to hold up a sale of a home. It's not to make money. I don't even know what the fee is, Jeff, a hundred dollars? It's to protect potential buyers and to address a problem. Because the critical thing that, that people sometimes didn't understand, I had, I talked to an older gentleman and, and he was very nice about it. Like, I, I delivered 31 years. He said, I knew that I had this thing, but I didn't know it was a problem. I've never had any problems. And that's the issue is your problem just got exported somewhere else because of your illegal or improper hookup. And it's those people that are suffering. So he did pick up on this and he, and he was heartened to hear that, you know, our taxes have been maintained, you know, we've made, done a good job. I think we can all agree, basically flat for 12 years. If you're trying to sell a home, Tim, you're, you're in the home building and buying and selling business, you know that Oklaun is very, is a very good market. Homes are selling at or above lists within a couple of days, certainly in my neighborhood. So those two things together, and this older gentleman recognized that. He said, you know, I'll probably get more money for my home than I, than I thought. He checked with a broker. So, so all of that kind of combined is we hope that people recognize, you know, on a group, community-wide effort, the logic of this and that they take advantage of it. And even if you don't, don't do it right away, even if you wait the last minute or you, you weren't aware of it, it's something, as Tim said, you can negotiate with the buyer because that buyer has the ability to take advantage of this 50/50 program as well. So, you know, at the end of the day, this is one of those ordinances that aren't necessarily great. Somebody's going to have to pay some money. But I think, you know, it's important to point out that we did everything we could to address that, to minimize the impact with the broader goal of improving life for everybody in the village.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I just have one quick comment. Trustee Phelan, you mentioned some people might not have received their copy of Oklaun Matters. That is available on the website. If you didn't get it, you could go to oklaunvillage.gov and then, or Village of Oklaun website, go to Oklaun Matters and get your copy. And that is available anytime. With that, let's call the vote, please, on eight D, like David. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
And trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item nine is ordinance 210218 and ordinance approving execution of an agreement for the purchase of Village Cell Tower leases and easements. May I have a motion on nine, please?
Moves to approve.
Uh, gonna give that to, I think, I, who was it on this side, please? I'm sorry. No one? Okay. Okay, I'm going to give it to trustee Phelan, seconded by trustee Vorder. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, just a brief discussion. This has been a long slog, as anyone knows who's been involved in the process or watching our meetings. At the end, I think we've come up with a really good solution for the village, significant amount of money for our cell tower enterprise and an ongoing relationship with the company who will now go into a due diligence phase. So it's not a done deal, per se, but partnering with a company that's an expert in this area, which the village is not. So we've talked about it at length. It's just gratifying to finally get it behind us or moving forward. You know, we can make use of that money in a lot of ways. So I just want to compliment everybody who was involved in the process. And Dan, if you wanted, our financial advisor, Dan, was the final reviewer of this. If there's anything you want to add, Dan?
Trustee Phelan asked me just to give a few, few oversights and I would also defer to attorneys as well. To stress, for the board, because this is the first time in a public session, the economics of this transaction is $1,350,000 at closing and that 50% of all future revenues from new and expanded processes. 55-year term. The only new piece of information that we hadn't talked to the board about before is that to the extent that an existing base rent lease, because we have these 13 leases, whatever there, is not fully realized, that the party has the right to offset future investment, but no right to claw back to us on the dollars. So again, to the whole scheme of things, we talked the last time, you have the firm $4,350,000, you have future money. So potentially, they have to go market to get the rest of their money back. I think the second thing, in deference to trustee Phelan particularly, but of everybody, is timing. You're approving the agreement today. The company is going to do due diligence for seven to 10 days. It's called a contract review. They just want to make sure they got the right universe of documents and, and that they're dealing with the right process. We expect that to be somewhat perfunctory. They will, and we will sign the contract at that time. Then they have the remaining due diligence, which I look like a real estate transaction, you're going through, checking all the other duties. And there's an anticipated closing then within 30 to 45 days after that process, which if my calendar is right, somewhere between May 15 and, excuse me, March 15th and April 1st would be there. And there's no reason, I think, because we started this process, asked them for a document. They said it would take five to seven days to get us the document and we get it in two days, I think. So I think a lot of the work has been vetted and they just want to get closed. I think time is money and they want to get through the whole process. So Kevin or Paul, if you have anything else on that.
So I, I do have a question.
Oh.
So.
Sorry.
If I understand this, so we're going to sell these cell towers and, and then these companies, they're going to market the leases of these new cell towers and we're going to get 50% of the, of future leases?
That's correct. As well as 50% of all amendments, which include extensions of the current agreements we have or increases the agreements.
So just to clarify, trustee, that, you know, they, they're buying the, and the village is going to split with the, with SBA, the company, 50% of new revenue. So that's either new, new tenants that they bring onto the towers, or if there's an existing tenant who wants to add more equipment, we get 50% of that.
So that's their business. I mean, we are not in the cell tower business.
Correct.
So we're, this company is going to take over that, market the cell towers and give us 50% of future revenue.
Correct.
Plus whatever they're giving us upfront.
Plus the 4.35 million, which is an upfront payment and they can't claw that back or anything.
Sounds like a good deal.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, let's call the vote, please, on item nine. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Village Clerks Report, item 10. Jane?
Approval of semi-monthly dispersments, number 2021-02D, dated January 26, 2021, in the amount of $1,568,000, 69, 68,619.
Thank you. May I have a motion on 10A, please?
Motion approved, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Vorderer made that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Stalker. Any discussion? Let's call the vote, please. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorderer?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichek?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you. No comments? Okay. Under my report, I'm just going to be very brief, but I want to talk about a couple of things. The police reform bill that you heard referenced, there's a I-bond section in that that would make it easier for folks to have no skin in the game and to just walk. Again, I, I, I just think of Siri and, you know, we need to just use a little caution and, and really protect innocent life. I'm not sure this is doing that. Vaccinations, okay. So the number one question I get asked by our seniors, by folks out in the community is, when can I get my vaccine? The county yesterday- yesterday has finally launched their website portal. So it's vaccine.cookcountyil.gov. Cook County IL is one word, no hyphen, no, no punctuation in there. And if you go there, you get a page that's a community vaccination program, and a big orange box that says, click here to sign up. If you sign up, then you get a list of, of available sites in your area where you can get the vaccine. The governor announced a huge effort out of Tinley Park. They're gonna have a massive vaccination program there. We will also have vaccines available in our community at Area Jewel Osco stores, at Mariano's pharmacies, at Walgreens pharmacies. I have not heard CVS onboard. I've seen Loyola also participating, and the county has several kind of sites at their community health centers as well. So who can get the vaccine? So right now, they're still doing Tier 1A, and Tier 1A is pretty much healthcare providers, frontline hospital workers, people in long-term care facilities, staff residents, and unaffiliated workers, including EMS personnel. So after 1A kind of gets their chance at it, then you have 1B, which is essential workers, like your first responders, correction officers, education sector, so our teachers, our school workers, food and agriculture utilities, transportation. I can tell you, our emergency operations center in this village is working really hard to get our first responders and teachers to the front of the line as much as possible, and have options in the community. We feel the only way our kids are gonna get back in school is if our schools have that vaccine. And remember, it is a two-part vaccine. Presently, all the vaccines from Pfizer and Moderna are one injection, and then a few weeks later, depending on which vaccine, you get a second one. So it's gonna take time, folks. We have about 12 million people in the state who potentially could be getting this vaccine, and each one needs it twice. And in the best-case scenario, it's about five, 10, 15 minutes per arm. I got my first vaccine as a healthcare worker, and it was about 25 minutes, about 10 minutes for the vaccine, and then you had to hang around 15 minutes. So logistically, just moving a large amount of people through, I want residents to be very, very patient with this process. Sign up. If you do not have access to the internet, they do have a hotline, and let me see if I could find that number. Of course, I don't have it handy. Here it is, 833-308-1988. And that's Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 833-308-1988. And they can maybe direct you. So if you're a senior, you're gonna follow all those healthcare workers, and educators, and frontline grocery workers, those, you're, you're the next tier. So it's not too early to register, if you want, and then the county sends a notification when it's your turn, and gives you access to making an appointment. And again, if you have access to internet, it's, it's just like scheduling anything else we do online. You click a time, they send a confirmation. It's, it's, it's coming along, but I have, I have real concerns that, you know, just it's gonna be a while at the rate we're going. And I think as we get better at it, it'll ramp up, but residents should be patient. You know, it's, it's a process that's just gonna take a while. And lastly, I don't want to discuss religion too much on a, on a public diocese like this, but, you know, when we talk about flooding in the community, this, this board has reached out to the Archdiocese multiple times for assistance with flooding, with proposals that would infuse millions of dollars, you know, perhaps even tens of millions of dollars into their coffers. And it breaks my heart that, you know, after eight years of pushing, we are no further along, and I see more parishes, more parishes consolidated, and because they don't have money. And, you know, I, it's, it's, I don't, I don't get it. The village is kind of moving on to other options, but I just have to express my frustration. So I'm getting kind of vocal this meeting, I apologize. Residents don't often see me angry, but that's all I've got to say. And with that, let me go back to our agenda here.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Trustee Stalker.
I want to put some dollar value on what you're talking about. We offered the Archdiocese $8 million to participate, to have them participate in the use of St. Gazamer as a flood detention area. We would clean it up, we would straighten it out, make it a park, take care of it in the future, and give them $8 million for property they can't use, because the Army Corps of Engineers has deemed it as a flood plain. They've stonewalled it, forgotten about it, and now we have to move on.
Yeah.
It's a shame. We'd like to help them, help themselves, but.
I know.
They seem to not care.
And this is being consolidated with Our Lady of Ridge, and it's affecting every, you know, every corner of Oaklawn, and I don't get it either. I, so anyway, thank you, trustee.
I mean, it's a shame. Imagine that, what that $8 million could do for all these schools at closing.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interject, it's even, it's even bigger of an opportunity, because it's not just the $8 million that the Archdiocese get, but this is a program that we've been introducing to the Archdiocese for well over eight years. And this, when we talked to MWRD, MWRD was very excited, and he was MWRD, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, they told us point-blank, if you could get this property, we would greenlight this project, greenlight it. So that's taxpayer dollars that would fund the vast majority of it. Now, picture, as trustee Stalker said, when trustee Phelan and I first started working on this, it was a beautiful park that had water, a nice trail around it, but would be functional for the water detention, especially not, you know, people forget that that water detention not only affects just the, the east side of the town and the south side of the town, but that ultimately leaves the water pressure going into Stony Creek. This thing would be encompassing the whole village, the relief that it would do to every resident of the village, including the very north where I'm at, and I know over on the very west where District 1 is at. So it, it, it really is frustrating, yes. I'm, I'm part of the parishes that have been consolidated, and we're consolidating with another parish. It's a tough decision, but let's not put out of the memory of, it's not just about money, it's about doing the right thing for the residents in the Village of Oaklawn by reducing a liability, water retention, making it a beautiful park, and being able to reduce taxpayer liability for when we get that 50-year or 100-year one.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes, trustee Phelan.
As, as long as we're all adding insights, a couple of things that are, also needs to be added to the discussion. The reference to eight years, this actually goes back almost 15 years. Mayor Heilmann and I had discussions early on with the 19th Ward Alderman, and so it's, and I, and I've made reference to that, that the frustration of how long we've been at this. And the, what trustee Olenichik and trustee Stalker referenced, the MWRD and Army Corps of Engineers was gonna commit $10 million to the project cost. So the $8 million that the Archdiocese could have made for land that they can't bury people on, that can't be stated enough. We are not taking land from the Archdiocese, or would not take land that they would otherwise bury and make money on. More importantly, or as important, in the last 10 years, and I confirm this with a couple of people I know in the business, and Jane, Jane's husband was not one of them, but he probably can attest to this, that the transition from burial to cremation has been dramatic. In Illinois, it lags the rest of the country, I think, largely because of the religious aspect in this area in particular, but it's something on the order of 40%. So you've got, A, we're not talking about land they would bury on otherwise, and that's, that's been the argument. And Brian Towne, within 10 minutes of working in the village and hearing about this, immediately cited an example that he confirmed of another property in the Chicago area that they did sell.
And made a golf course.
Made a golf course.
Yep.
Let that sink in for all of you, and I hate to say it this way, because I am one of them, all of you Catholics out there in Oaklawn suffering from flooding, think about that for a moment. A golf cour, and by the way, not a public course, high-profile private course. So this is not about doing what's right by people. This is not taking care of the flock. This is a combination of punitive, based on prior relationships, including our village manager who dressed them down and was told flat out, okay, you want to be that way. Thousands of people are suffering as a result, and it's long past time. When you have the Army Corps, MWRD, all the communities around there, the mayors, the South Wisconsin mayors, the ALSA people who benefit, everybody resoundingly in favor of this. The only people holding this sensible solution up is the Archdiocese of Chicago, which, as we just said, consolidated, closed, closed, consolidate.
I know, I know. It's, it's, it's maddening. So I just had to comment on it. Sorry, I just hit.
Mayor, I mean, can you imagine the frustration of someone that wakes up on a Sunday morning?
Yeah.
Their basement is flooded.
Yeah.
They have to rush to get to mass, to that church, which could possibly have helped alleviate that problem, and then those people put a collection plate in front of you, asking you for money.
Well, Tim, I'm not gonna go that far.
Well.
The Irish, the Irish accent made it a little more tolerable.
Hey, Mayor, just.
It simplifies it, but I think it, uh.
Yeah, we're talking about church consolidations here, and we're gonna lose one of our most beautiful physical churches in your district, Tim, St. Louis de Montfort. I'm sure that real estate will go on the market, okay? They closed that school sometime.
Maybe they put a golf course down.
But anyway, I just want to mention to her.
Yeah, the school, the old school years ago.
Church in consolidation, I believe, with St. Gerald's. But anyway, it's a loss.
I know, and it didn't, it doesn't have to be when there's other options, and there's not even a conversation. It just breaks my heart. And my contacts who work in the Archdiocese, I have several patients who do, they describe, you know, such austere conditions and resources, much like Oaklawn has experienced. And it doesn't have to be that way, and no one understands it. So anyway.
Mayor, my, one more, must add. I'm sitting here looking at Dermot Conley, our local media rep here, and I do recall, one of the things that did get the Archdiocese to respond was media coverage, which they did not like.
Right.
Certainly in the way you were handling, which I applaud you, but Dermot and I attended the same grammar school. I think he was a couple of years behind me. His sister and I were in the same class, or maybe it was the public school, I can't recall, but that parish, Queen Universe, is also, or maybe already has been chopped, and is going down. So I'm appealing to Dermot there, and others in the media, to make sure this is known, because there's only so much we can do.
Right.
And I, and I'm hopeful it hits home for him and others who recognize this is not a religion issue. I don't think you should have prefaced it by, by apologizing or qualifying. This is, again, a quality of life issue.
I know.
A sensible, maddening, how can anybody look at it any differently than it is? And people need to be held accountable for this.
Thank you.
And, and Tom, now that you mentioned Dermot, Dermot, this is your last meeting as an employee of The Reporter.
Oh, wow, Dermot.
The shackles are off.
I just want to tell you, you've done a wonderful job keeping our community informed on business, and I just want to wish you the best of luck as you move on.
Go out with a bang.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dermot.
Thank you. He says, a pleasure working with all of us, and we wish you the very best, sir. Okay, that's gonna conclude my report. Let me see if there was anything else I wanted to say. I think that's enough. Okay. Item 12, executive session 202102, for the purpose of discussing number one, approval of closed meeting minutes 202101, dated January 12, 2021. Number two, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village. Number three, the setting of a price for the sale or lease of property owned by the village. And four, information regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employee or employees of the village. May I have a motion on 12? That was trustee Olenichik, was it?
Second.
Okay, seconded by trustee Desmond. Any discussion? Let's call the vote, please, on 12. Trustee Phelan?
Yes.
Trustee Vorder?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Olenichik?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Passes. Okay, we're gonna go into executive session. The time is 10:05 AM. Let's